All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We're gonna skip over doing the minutes from last meeting and move on to, we have a public hearing tonight. The town is applying for an EPA brownfields grant. And we're gonna have a public hearing on that. For that, we have our town engineer Ray. And then he's working with, Tim is from Nobis, who we've seen here before and you've presented to us. And then Dick Lewis is a associate working with Ray on this project. So I think, Ray, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Do you wanna do a history of where we got like?
Sure.
Why we're here?
Yep.
And then we can go into the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, welcome. As OJ had mentioned, this is a public information meeting for the Riverfront Park Project. It's part of the process to get an EPA brownfields cleanup grant. It's one of the requirements. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to, the focus of tonight's meeting is really to focus in on the environmental site assessment work and the remedial action plan that has been developed by Tim Andrews to my left, my colleague to my left, from Nobis Engineering and his group. And the other thing we wanna talk about is the EPA brownfields grant application itself. Talk a little bit about the process and the timelines involved there. And Mr. Dick Lewis, my colleague, who's assisting us on the EPA grant application, will be focusing his remarks on that. But just to give everybody a background, this is for the Riverfront Park Project. This is for the 22 acres that the town owns. And this, the 22 acres is located behind the Linwood Shopping Plaza, between the Shopping Plaza and the east branch of the Pemmy River. And just immediately east of the solid waste, solid waste transfer facility. So the project started, I think, back in 2017, as I recall, if I recall correctly.
I believe that sounds good.
It's been a while. So, and just to give everybody a little bit of background on the history of the project. We were retained by the town to do the design and oversee the construction of the Riverfront Park Project. During the course of our preliminary design work, one of the things we had to go for was an alteration of terrain permit. To go for the alteration of terrain permit required test bidding be done on the site in order to determine the soil conditions. And when we stuck a shovel in the ground, lo and behold, we found some solid waste material that was cause for concern. So after much discussion with the Board of Selectmen, it was decided to identify the extent and level of contamination or potential contamination on the site. And we, we retained Nobis Group to assist us in that, in that regard. And we did find a significant enough, significant amount of solid waste material that warrant more detailed evaluation. That evaluation was done. And ultimately, we went for a targeted brownfields grant to do an assessment. And the town was successful in getting that grant. Tim and his group have been in a lot of conversation with DES about what the findings are. What's the level of contamination? What's the extent of the contamination? And also a lot of conversations about what does a remediation look like at the site? So this environmental site assessment work has kind of put a little bit of a pause, well, a big pause in the schedule for the project. And a lot of it has to do with obtaining the grants necessary to get the environmental site assessment work done. And we're really beholden to the regulatory agencies timeline in that regard. So we're here tonight to actually, we're coming to the, I guess, the end game as far as the environmental site work is concerned, a majority of it. So we want to present that information to you. Again, to just express and to inform the public about what the level of contamination is. And also what the action plan would be to remediate that and get the, get the property ready for reuse and future development of the park. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tim Andrews from Nobis Group. And he'll run through the environmental site assessment work that's been completed to date and the remedial action plan. Tim?
Thank you, Ray. So just by wave introduction, I'm Tim Andrews from Nobis Group. I'm a professional geologist licensed in New Hampshire. I've been with Nobis for 24 years. I'm a senior project manager. My, my title is Director of State Municipal Services, which means I get to work with a lot of municipalities like the town of Lincoln in helping out with problems like this, which is great. I really enjoy this type of work. So we've had the great benefit of working on behalf of the town throughout this project, whether it's under contract to the town, under contract direct to EPA, or for this phase of work for the development of the assessment of brownfields cleanup alternatives or remedial action plan, as we call it, under a contract with New Hampshire DES. So we have several contracts that we, we have access to. And fortunately, we're able to string these along because, as I like to say, brownfields is a patchwork quilt of funding and takes typically more than one source and a lot of energy to push these projects through. So I would like to basically present, we've been here before, we presented our investigations, our findings. So this is really, the intent is to, to do a summary of that rather than a complete overview of that and focus on the remedial approach and the pathway to that remedial approach that we've selected because that's what's being presented in the application for the cleanup grant to EPA. So I don't know how well this would work with the microphone over there and the presentation over here. But I've got enough copies, I think everybody's got a copy in front of you. So you don't need to squint too hard. You have the locusts plan. Ray described the location of the, of the facility, the park, or the proposed park. So want to point out that it's basically, the whole parcel currently includes the transfer station portion of the property. And the intent of the park is to subdivide that property because we're gonna have two separate uses here. We're going to have a transfer station use and we're going to have a public access use, which is much different in how it's going to be used and what the levels of risk and exposure are going to be. So to specify what our focus is, it's going to be on the red outline on figure two here, which is basically the park property, which I believe is a total of 11 acres for the park itself, Ray? 19? 19?
Yeah, the, there's two lots. One lot is 20 acres and the other lot, I believe, is acre and a half.
So we're looking at just the portion that will be the park. Now, anything that has to be managed for the transfer station would be managed separately because it's the easiest way to manage this rather than try to encompass both of these properties, if you will. So on this figure two, we have an overlay basically of the park features. I know that the, you know, some of the skate park is moved now and it's not part of this, but we've left it for now. Been figuring some feature will go there, but this is the intent is to basically develop the property and also the other features that are on here. So the blue outline, which you find up in the northwest corner is what we know as the Burney landfill. So the Burney Corporation leased that portion of the property from the town back in the, I believe, the 90s, the late 80s, early 90s, for the purpose of discharging some of their wastewater from their, their processes. And allowing that material to leach and then through the leaching, capture any of the metals that were left in their discharge or whatever. Burney subsequently came in and cleaned up what they had discharged there to the point that New Hampshire DES closed that out. But there is a lot of reference in what we've done to the Burney landfill. That's the location. The Burney landfill is not the focus of what we're looking at here. We are looking at the historic impacts from the former paper mill that resided in this vicinity. The other areas where the paper mill were have been, their brownfield sites have been redeveloped now and they're beneficially reused. The Playhouse and some of the other properties in here have been redeveloped to a beneficial reuse. And that's what we're really trying to get to with this last portion of what would have been the historic use from the, from the paper mill. In the center of the property, we have this sort of grayish hazy area. That is a discharge location where the paper mill discharged their wastewater sludge material from the paper processes. So that's also a feature that we've incorporated in this. And you'll see a number of soil borings in blue, test pits in, in sort of gold or orange here. Some monitoring well installations with a monitoring well symbol that have basically peppered the entire property with the work that Nobis has been involved. This is not the sole work that's been done. There's been a lot of other work out here historically that we've incorporated in for, for the purposes of sort of demonstrating where we're at now. This was easiest without a whole lot of stuff on the figure that really didn't make a lot of sense. So so during our investigations, if you refer to figure three, this is a, this is a focus in on the sludge discharge area. And we performed a number of sampling locations within the sludge discharge area to collect environmental samples for analysis and to measure and sort of document the observations of the sludge. So the sludge out here, buried in thickness between two and six inches is pretty uniform. Looks like sludge, it's got sort of a, sort of a paper-y type of matrix in it, as you would expect from fibers that were discharged from the paper making process and buried in color depending upon how oxidized it was. And the general result is we've got a couple of exceedances of arsenic, which is very common. It's common in our geology, so it gets, it gets mixed in a lot with our, with our geologic issues. Sometimes it could be a natural occurrence, which can kind of confuse some of our investigations. In this case, arsenic is also commonly found in wood products and things like that because vegetation takes up metals, certain metals into their matrix and process it. And then it gets discharged as part of the waste product. So, but really overall, very little minimal concern for impacts, not very high concentrations, relatively speaking, where the arsenic exceeded the standards that we would look at. The big issue here is this is a waste product that's exposed at the surface that, that is not really considered a solid waste. So it's not allowed to be there. So D, New Hampshire DES's big concern would be take care of the waste the way it should be, which in this case would be just excavation of this. So scraping up six inches of material, disposing it offsite at a, at a facility, probably a landfill or something like that, that has the right acceptance criteria. So if you move on to figure four, figure four is a summary of the soil contaminant distribution that we've identified through our investigations across the site. And again, I wanna, I want to emphasize, this was from the investigations we've done more recently. This does not include, there is a figure in here that includes a lot of historical data from past environmental work, including the closure of the Burney landfill, which occurred in the early 2000s. That's not on here, but that is included in how we've sort of come up with our approach to remedy here. So as you can see, we have a very wide distribution of test pits, soil borings that were completed by us. There's some work that Calix Environmental did on behalf of the town just prior to us getting involved in here. And our primary contaminants as identified on here, this is only shows the contaminants that exceed the soil standards that we're looking to apply. Primary contaminants are what we call polyaromatic hydrocarbons, which is fancy word for saying mostly ash or other types of material. So PAHs, as we call them, they come in two forms. They're, are petrogenic or they, they originate from oil products or they're pyrogenic or they originate from ash or other combustion byproducts. These are ash related. There's ash all throughout the site. Ray's been out there for some of the test pits or tree falls over out there. You'll see ash underneath the roots of the tree where the tree fell over. He's literally at the surface of some of these locations. So this is not a groundwater concern. These contaminants don't typically dissolve into groundwater to any great degree, but it becomes a concern for contact, especially when we're talking about a development that is bringing new sort of population to this area potentially. We also have identified a number of metals, particularly arsenic, again, our friend arsenic, lead, barium and mercury, all at concentrations varying and some exceeding the soil remediation standards that we apply. These metals are also not particularly a concern for groundwater contamination, but do become again a concern for contact, dermal contact, inhalation if they're dust or airborne, things of that nature. So this is the general distribution of just the exceedances. And as you will see, the exceedances are primarily focused on the northwest section of the site to the northwest of the sludge disposal area, which is fortunate for us because that allows us a way of sort of delineating, what are we gonna focus our remediation on? This was confirmed in test pits where we observed fill material, we get to the south end more towards the riverside. Hardly any fill or none in some of those locations. It looks as if they took a lot of areas that were undulating as far as drainage and things like that and formed over time and filled in those areas, which was pretty typical back in the day for the industry to do. So moving on to figure five, here is some historical information from the Burney landfill closure, as I referenced. So Burney Corporation came in, they did what they were supposed to do, they cleaned up their, their mess and got a clean bill of health from New Hampshire DES. But some of their data included data that they claimed and is likely the case to be related from the discharges of the waste material from, from the paper mill. Which in particular has some very high concentrations of lead at depth out here. We're seeing concentrations of lead about 26,000 parts per million. So to give you context, the soil standard that I apply a routine on a daily basis is 400. So that's two orders of magnitude at least higher than what the soil standard that is allowed by DES to stay in place is. So that becomes sort of a point of concern for us. This is not material that's at the surface. We did not repeat this in any of the work that we did as far as the other samples that were collected. But this data exists at depth beneath this area of, again, what was the Burney landfill was nicely capped over and graded and basically left to be managed as such. So this became a consideration for what we have come up with for remedial action plan. Moving on to figure six. The last media that we wanna discuss is, which is typically one of the more regulated media because it becomes a immediate health issue, particularly in New Hampshire, is groundwater. Because we drink our water, we get a lot of it comes from rural wells. So groundwater becomes a very, very important piece for us to look at when it comes to these investigations that we do. We didn't install a lot of monitoring walls on the site, very limited distribution. We looked at groundwater data that was collected for the closure of the Burney landfill. But what we have largely is, there's really not a whole lot of impacted groundwater quality relative to the contaminants that we've found were present in the waste material. So we, we have some exceedances, low level exceedances of arsenic, which has a very low groundwater quality standard. It's arguable if, if it's naturally occurring or not. Remember arsenic is in all of our mineralogy in New Hampshire and it's very problematic as far as some of our private wells and bedrock and such. So it's at such a low, low concentration that, you know, we would argue that it's probably related to a natural occurrence and not really related to something dissolving from the contamination that's present. We had a bit of a concern for cadmium, which went away. We had a, if you look at this well, MW104 over here, we had our, during our initial sampling round, we had a concentration of cadmium of about 20 parts per billion, which the standard is five. So we're four times higher than the standard. Confirmatory sampling indicates that we did not have an issue. I think that there was something mixed up on this. I'm gonna have to look into that. In any case, the follow-on sampling that we've conducted for cadmium indicated that it wasn't confirmed in that location. So which is good news because we were really wondering what the source of that was. It really shouldn't be from these paper manufacturing sources. It wasn't in any of the soil. So it left us wondering where that was coming from. Lastly, we have the virgin contaminants of PFAS or polyfluorid-alkyl substances. We use a lot of acronyms with them because I can't really pronounce most of the compounds. So I can refer to a lot of the acronyms, but we could, you know, if there are serious questions, we could get into some of that. But we have a couple of, New Hampshire has some pretty stringent local standards, state standards. Recently EPA has announced even more stringent federal guidelines for the maximum contaminant limits. The maximum contaminant limits are really applied to drinking water standards, not necessarily to groundwater. So DES has groundwater standards that we apply. We do have some slight exceedances of some of these PFAS compounds in at least two of the wells, MW104 and MW105. My experience seeing this is, this is not a surprise. We're seeing this a lot across the state. Sometimes it's not even related to something at the sites we're studying. We're finding a lot more sort of exposure by aerial deposition, of which, you know, we, we receive a lot of aerial deposition that isn't coming from in-state, it's coming from out-of-state. But it's becoming a pretty big issue for DES to untangle. But from my experience, my professional experiences, these are relatively low concentrations or not a significant concern for management of the site because, number one, nobody's exposed to it. We don't have any wells, private water supply or public water supply wells that, that are taking access to the water that's on the site. And we also have the river here, which is a good hydrogeologic boundary for us. You know, ironically, the joke is, you know, dilution is a solution to pollution, but in this case, sometimes it is because when you have such a large flow of water, by the time this water mixes, excuse me, in from the groundwater, you're really gonna come up with a non-tact. So that's not a very significant issue. We're seeing much higher concentrations at some of our landfill, solid waste landfill and other sites around the state. So that's really, these are not great concerns for us. The big point is our contaminants of concern, lead, barium, mercury, we're not seeing that in any of the groundwater samples that were collected either now or from the previous work done on the Burney landfill. So we don't regard any of the contaminants that are at the site as a high risk for groundwater contamination. Which leads us to, what do we do with it? The AVCA, the Assessment of Brownfields Cleanup Alternatives process is EPA's version of what we know in New Hampshire as a remedial action plan. So when I use the terms AVCA or RAP, they're, they're basically one and the same. They're basically a process by which we look at a site, we look at the potential use or the reuse of the site. We identify a series of potential remedial alternatives that could be applied to a given situation. And then our engineers go through basically some scoring of feasibility, financial cost, how quick it will clean up the site and how effective it will be. And there are some other factors that I won't get into, but basically we do a whole scoring of various remedial alternatives. And by the state's requirements, we have to have three remedial alternatives minimum we look at. So the first alternative that we always look at is the throwaway alternative. It's the do nothing. What, what if we do nothing with the site? We leave it in place. That would require putting a fence all the way around the site, putting an activity and use restriction on the site that basically says you can't dig here because you're going to encounter these types of soils. And if you do, you have to have countermeasures in place to basically protect workers, manage the soil, things like that. And the site will have to be, we already have groundwater contamination. And even though, as I said, it's not a high risk, we have an exceedance, we will be obligated to manage that for the duration that it continues to exceed. So once a year monitoring, maybe twice a year, as long as there's groundwater contamination or is there, there's a potential source of the site of groundwater contamination, DES typically will require that permit. So looking at those alternatives, the cost of this was about 300,000 over a 30-year term. But it achieves nothing of what we wanna do. We're leaving the site as it is, other than putting a fence around it. We're not allowing for beneficial reuse. It's not really effective at cleaning it up. We're just kind of hiding it away and we're not, we're not gaining any, anything of value out of it. So this alternative scored really low for the cost of it. Figure eight is alternative two. Alternative two was essentially, remember I spoke to, we gotta remove the sludge from the sludge discharge area because that is an unallowed waste material that was left in place. So excavation of the sludge, excavation of shallow accessible lead contaminated soils. We discussed the contamination of the soils containing lead was two orders of magnitude higher than the current standard. The DES also allows risk-based management of certain soils up to what they call the upper contaminant limit, the UCL, which is basically 10 times the soil standard. So that would allow us to 4,000, but that's nowhere near 26,000. We still have a long way to go to meet that concentration. So looking at the depth, however, where these samples were collected, some of these appear to be 15, 20 feet deep. This soil that was underneath the Burney landfill that has these high concentrations is not particularly accessible and not very feasible to excavate without a lot of money, a lot of moving dirt around. And to, to what end? Because we don't have a groundwater issue. It's currently isolated, nobody is exposed to this soil. So we have basically recommended to DES for this alternative, let's do hotspot excavation of anything exceeding the UCL, the upper contaminant limit of 4,000, which we consider accessible, which is less than 10 feet. That's basically the standard excavation depth of a typical excavator on a construction site like this. So that seems pretty feasible. Now, we don't have any soil contamination exceeding the UCL within 10 feet that we've identified. All the soil samples historically are deeper than that. But we wanted to provide a provision within the alternative in the event that we uncover something so that we've got some guidelines to work with them that DES can approve. Or if there's future work, what do we do with it? How do we handle it? We need some guardrails. We can't just say, ah, we don't wanna do anything. We wanna let New Hampshire DES know, we've thought about this and that we think that this is a reasonable approach. This is reasonably potential for exposure if it's shallow enough. We should get it out of there. We, we currently don't have that. So while we have that as a line item in this alternative, we have a zero quantity for that. Again, it still allows for the guideline for this to be managed, the site to be managed like this in the future. And then bringing in the shaded area here is basically, this is, remember I talked about the limits of this, of the fill that we identified. These test pits down here, as we get closer to the river, don't have any fill in them. There's nothing in there that we need to address or excavate or manage. So the focus of this is really from the sludge discharge area up to the northwest, which is approximately seven acre area that would then be removed of the trees so that we could work with it, graded out, managed within whatever context that the, the park design wants it to be designed as. And then we bring in and install a geotextile fabric as a barrier to identify, here's the limits of the dirty material underneath and bring in two feet of clean material over the top of this to basically isolate this material and prevent exposure. So now we have, basically, we, we've covered over and taken away the risk of exposure of this material. We provided a demarcation barrier so workers are out there working on facilities in the future or other things. They know when they're crossing that barrier into the contaminated material underneath. And we would continue to monitor the groundwater, make sure nothing changes. But this would really allow for isolating the contamination in a manageable way that is reasonably cost-effective, but also gives the town the working grade and surface that you would need to construct the park. Cause you can't construct it on what's out there as it is right now. You're going to have to bring in some amount of material to have a base to construct the park features on top of, to put the parking on top of, to do these other things and to grass over on top. So this seems like it might be a reasonable approach. And then a 30-year term for groundwater market. This alternative came up to engineering costs of approximately $2.1 million. So the last alternative we looked at on figure nine. Actually, so is basically, recall these very high lead concentrations that were reported from the closure of the Burney landfill that are very deep. So we basically looked at the extent of what these, what these So we basically looked at the extent of what these, what these, anything above the four thousand upper contaminant limit is. And outlined this and assumed that this volume of material will be exhumed. After removing quote-unquote clean material on top of it and trying to get to it. Um, and disposed of offsite, such high concentrations, we're assuming that it's going to um, test characteristically hazardous. Uh, as a hazardous waste and not go off as sort of a non-hazardous, there, there are very different costs involved with the disposal of those. Uh, and then we would backfill this area with clean fill material. And we would implement all the other things that we talked about with alternative two, which would be removal of the sludge in the sludge disposal area. Grading them, grading them site out and installing geotextile and two feet of material over it. Because we still have to manage all of the other materials. This really just gets us access to this very highly contaminated lead material so that we're meeting the U C Ls. Um, this price tag was six point two million dollars. So I'll let you guess which alternative. Be recommended. As a risk-based alternative. And, and so this is working outside the box of what is the typical. Application of, of the standards in the current risk guidelines that are in place, but. New Hampshire D E S allows us to propose a site-specific risk-based approach to the cleanup. That principally progresses exposure and mitigates that exposure of the contaminants, the media that's out there. And again, there's no groundwater that anybody's drinking and we're going to manage that. We're going to manage that regardless, because those contaminants aren't going to go away regardless of which alternative we select. Um, we're going to cover over and manage these materials that are, you know, heavy metals or. They're not good for children to play in, uh, P A Hs or, or some of them are carcinogenic. So we don't want them dust porn or anything like that. We're going to manage all that. And then we're going to provide a nice working area to build the park. So alternative two at two point one million dollars is the recommended remedial approach that we've come up with. And we've provided in our draft, A B C rap that we just submitted to New Hampshire D E S for review. So this is what we recommended. It's not necessarily the final iteration of this. It still requires reviewing comment by New Hampshire D E S. But I've already had discussions with them as to what approach we're taking to make sure we're not going on a path that isn't allowed to be trodden. And I've received no pushback on, on this style of approach. Uh, given that we're showing how we're mitigating all of the media contamination that, that has the potential here. And that we're making sure that the site is, is usable in a safe manner to, in the future, bring the public to. So with that, I bombarded you with a lot of information, a lot of, a lot of data and other things. So if you have questions, I want to make sure that you don't walk out of here still wondering that question. There's nothing worse than. You know, me presenting at this and you had a question that you didn't quite grasp or didn't quite answer. I want to help answer those. Yes, sir.
Quick question on figure four. Um, where Calix did the two thousand seventeen test. Um, I don't see any exceedance way over to the right there. My question to you is, did you retest some of the areas in case, you know, um. Foods migrated towards that period, I, I mean, towards that area and instead it wasn't clean.
We, we definitely did some retesting, but you know, we tried to focus on areas that, that Calix had not focused on before. And certainly relied on the data that they had. Um, and we definitely tried to reproduce some of the data from, from the Bernie closure too. Uh, in what we did. So. Which you were looking to the, to the right side of the figure.
The west side.
Right, okay. Yes, so we relied heavily, I would say, on the data I'll produce in good faith by Calix. Where, where it existed and tried to fill in data gaps. Um, again, because the funding only goes so far, so we want to get the most out of this stuff as, as we can.
No, no, you did a great job. Thank you. But then you answered my question. But you know, when you mentioned Bernie and Bernie had a personal interest in passing the test. Otherwise it goes back to them to re, you know, re-mitigate what was there. And get final approval from D E S.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and they did receive a full closure letter that said that their issue was closed out. And frankly, their largest waste stream was included copper, which we don't really have standards for, but because it was a waste product. D E S wants to clean that up. So um, there were no other particularly hazardous metals. If I recall from their waste streams, it's largely from, from their uh, copper washing processes and stuff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good point one mill engineering costs. Beyond that, let's call in on that basically. Well, let's make it.
Uh, so that includes uh, the clearing rubbing that it would take. Uh, all the soil disposal from the, from the sludge disposal area. Um, the grading, uh, all the site work includes all the engineering oversight, the confirmatory sampling, if any, that we would do. Um, the, you know, any other uh permitting. So you know, a lot of these, if you, if you end up looking at this, what we do is basically, there are some engineering allowable's. As far as the, the cost assumptions. So your, your engineering permitting and your, your contingency become percentages of overall. So and there's a tendency built into that. Um, which we, you know, we hope is, is going to be adequate. What we've seen post-COVID is. Our contingencies didn't cover what we did during COVID, but what we're getting for pricing right now, because prices have just gone through the roof. Particularly on disposable and trucking and things like that. So, um. But there's a lot of, it's just sort of best management practices, engineering baked into that. So that includes all of that work plus thirty-year term of monitoring and everything that it takes to. Well, the, that cost includes that, but we can't cover all of that under the cleanup grant. EPA grant will only cover a certain amount of time before it expires. So we might get a couple of rounds of sampling, monitoring under our belt. But it doesn't include the full term of thirty years, but that's a much smaller chunk. Um, it also includes the fill material, you know, the geotextile we discussed, all of the site work to install that.
The basic pad site ready for whatever you want to go.
For Ray, put it in.
Yeah, so bas- basically it includes everything that gets you um, basically a footprint or a pad, if you will, to put whatever you're proposing there. In this case, it would be the park. Correct, right.
So I have a, a couple of questions. Um, the sludge evacuation area, one acre. That you said that that sludge is typically are, are on average a few inches, six inches thick. So is that the amount of evacu-, you know, excavation from that area or do you, do you go deeper than that?
No, I mean, again, because this is an area that we're, we're still going to cover this over with geotextile and cover it with clean fill material.
Right.
You got to build off of something, right?
Right.
We're really just there to remove the sludge, because where we fall, this is, this gets a little squirrely in the regulatory framework. But the solid waste materials that were discharged out here dumped by the, by the um, paper mill. They're concerned, they were done, all of that activity was done prior to nineteen eighty-one. Nineteen eighty-one is important because that's when we adopted our solid waste rules. So this is considered what we call a pre-eighty-one landfill. It doesn't have to comply with solid waste. Rules as we have them now, because it's grandfathered in. The sludge discharge though was a liquid discharge. It's not a solid waste.
Hmm.
It's, that's a byproduct of a, of a liquid discharge. So that's not considered the same as. How the waste material, the solid waste material is being treated. If that makes any sense. So that's why we have to activate this, but we can leave all this in place.
Okay.
When we're done. We probably do some confirmatory soil sampling, but there really isn't much there. It's very obvious where the sludge is. It's a very compact, fine sort of, but almost uh, uh, clay, you know, because of the matrix and it's settled in over time. Uh, so it's very visually observable where that horizon is between the sludge and the material already. So any, any, any confirmation sampling would be minimal there, because it's not really going to gain us a whole lot.
And in that area, I believe that there was um. Test pits dug that went down deeper. And so obviously you, you didn't find the contamination maybe, but, but it was very like spongy. Soil.
Probably a lot of unconsolidated material out there that makes it problematic to construct on. And, and so Ray has worked with some of our geotechnical engineers to look at some of that in critical areas like the parking. And, and stuff like that, where we have to have good working surface from an engineering perspective. To support whatever we're building on it. And I think that we've got some options that we, we've talked about to that, so.
Yeah, I can weigh in there a little bit. Uh, since we're working with Novus' geotechnical group uh, to look at. The biggest, biggest concern we have with the solid waste material in particular is the stability of that material. So we don't want to put a park, that's where the parking lot's supposed to go. So we don't want to put a parking lot on unstable material, because once you pave it, it's just going to crack. So um, one of the things we're looking at is, uh, we did look at is, we may have to excavate a certain amount of that material. In order to bring in uh, more structural backfill, um, than even what is proposed or needed for the site remediation point. Uh, a part of the project. So, and that's one of the distinctions that we kind, we had a lot, some conversation in-house about where does that cut off? Where is that cutoff between, because we talked about where's the park begin and the remediation end type of thing? So we've kind, we're trying to strike that balance, uh, but we may have to do some excavation beyond uh, with. Beyond from what we, you know, we're showing here at EPA and D E S at this time.
Okay, and does, does. First of all, who, who, who does this? Does the EPA pay for this or does the EPA do this project? Is my first question. And then, and then with that is going back to what you just said is, can. Extra excavation be done like under the parking lot proposed area to stabilize it? Even if the town pays for that portion and the EPA doesn't, can that be done, you know, simultaneously?
So I will answer part of that. I don't want to steal Dick's thunder.
Okay.
Someone, that's what he's been lifting heavy, but I will say that the, the, our purpose here is. The, the town is in pursuit of an EPA brownfields cleanup grant. So uh, I'm, I'm currently working with Dick on another project with a city that received basically a two million dollar grant. And uh, they're given the money as a grant. They implement it. They have the funding. And then they apply for basically their, you know, reimbursement vouchers against what they're paying out for that stuff. Um, the, the price tag is EPA is involved with everything, right? So everything that we do gets reviewed and approved and everything. It's a little bit of a slower process. So it's, it's not friendly for commercial developers, because they don't like the wait, but it's great for municipalities that have the ability to sort of plan this stuff out. So what we're trying to do is get a funding grant that the town would manage to implement this. In accordance with the EPA and D E S requirements. So um. Your other question, anything's possible. We can do a lot of work simultaneously, uh, depending upon how we phase it out. Um, because this material is exempt as long as it stays within the footprint. The nice thing is if, if Ray wants this excavated out for the parking lot and we've got a place on site, we can keep it. We can deposit it somewhere else, as long as we don't remove it from within the boundaries of the site. Because it, it's again, it's an exempt material from a remediation aspect. So if he, if Ray needs two feet out here, maybe we need to build this up over here for the earth and mound. Um, we can place it, we can compact it in a little bit more manageable way. It gives him more of what he needs for the parking area, so that we've got a little more surety that that's not going to sink over time. Um, and we're not incurring any cost for the disposal. Now, we have included some cost for disposal. There's inevitably something that can't stay on site that has to go. So our estimate has included a nominal amount of volume to account for that, whether it's putting in, you know. If, if there's utilities that have to go in and we really don't have a place to lose those foils or other things that we, you know, we just. It's, that's, we can't really use that type of material. We encounter something that is so bad to put back in as far as a structural standpoint. We have some contingency to look into the cost estimate for disposal. Did that answer your question?
It does. It, just as a follow-up, so then. Uh, under this plan, when we're done, the site excavation area that um, is outlined in yellow there. That becomes usable space for the park?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so there will be a wetlands permitting component to that, because it is technically a wetlands. I know it's. It's kind of a strange world we live in, but the moment it's got cattailed, regardless of its original intent, it becomes a wetland. So I know Ray has already uh, you know, spoken to the Wetlands Bureau, I think, about that in the process and. You know, that's not going to be a big hangup, but there are certain processes, permits that we'll still have to follow. But that will become usable area and maybe that becomes an area where we take some of this material from the parking area. We put it back in there, because we just excavated some of that out.
And if you, if you look at uh, figure two, um, that shows the um, the footprint of the site. And it shows all the park features. You can see, we weren't looking at using that area for anything in particular. I mean, there's an encroachment of the lawn area, uh, where we would have a pavilion. Just again, that would just, the lawn area is designated as kind of green space. Um, and that was an estimate based on the, in terms of its footprint, based on, you know, grading and other considerations. So um, so that the sludge disposal area, we, we knew we had a problem there early on. And that was part of the Calix work um, back in two thousand seventeen, when we found, we found, um, we got hits of. Uh, some levels of contamination. So we purposely, from a design standpoint, stayed away from that area, knowing that maybe that was going to be problematic and worked around it. Um, but yes, as you know, uh, again, the, the town has um, supported and voted on a concept plan. But that doesn't mean you can't revisit it. If you want to use, you know, if you want to revisit the concept plan and use that sludge disposal area for something else, certainly can do that.
All right, and then, just a few of them. Oh, the, the fill you're bringing in, you said it's two feet deep.
Yeah.
And underneath that's going to be a fabric barrier, let's say. Okay. What, what, what is the, any restrictions on the planting of trees? Like the trees have to be shallow roots that only need two feet, can, can, can roots go down through the fabric?
That's a very good question. And I would say that, you know, the, the fabric is supposed to really demarcate. You know, the difference, it's not, this isn't a landfill cap where we don't want roots to penetrate, because then it's penetrating the seal for the, for the impervious cap.
Hmm.
So I don't think that that would be a serious issue. Um, but it's a great question that we should, I should definitely bring to D E S's attention, but I don't think, again, because. This, this material is exempt typically from management. Again, we're trying to isolate the exposure. So if the tree's going down and you've still got the barrier fabric around it, it's really demarcating that. I don't think that that's going to be a significant concern, but that's, that's a very good question that I'll have to, uh, I have a, a call with them actually tomorrow to discuss. The project, I'm going to bring that up, so.
Okay. Did you, okay, I didn't know. Oh, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I think that's several questions. Um, underneath the alternative two. Are there areas that cannot be used? And if so, how much of that?
Uh, currently our alternative two assumes that by the time we're done. The entire area of the proposed park would be of some beneficial reuse. There really should be no restrictions in using it. And again, that, that's predicated on, we have a park here. If we're building buildings or we're doing something different or something changes, we have to revisit that. And that's not to say that it's not impossible to change that up. I just want to keep expectations on the right side of, 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 up here. Um, but currently our assumption is that by the time we're done, the entire area of the park will be completely accessible. Uh, and usable for the park purposes.
All right, thank you. Um, trans, you, you spoke about the transfer station use and, and. Uh, that, does that come in underneath this alternative two and a two point one million? Um, is, is there money being spent to revisit that?
It is not, because again, uh, basically the purpose, there's two purposes of, of separating them out. Number one, the transfer station is a completely different use. So when New Hampshire D E S looks at. Uh, the potential for exposure, they look at, the typical things they look at are, are the presence. Of children, the frequency and intensity of children, the presence of adults, the frequency and the intensity of adults. So the purpose is if you have an area that's got children present, high frequency, high intensity, okay, it's, it's a playground or something like that. Where there's a high potential exposure. The transfer station falls under a completely different risk category than a municipal park would, right? We're not inviting the public to come picnic at the transfer station. Um, you know, they're not there for long durations of time, only the employees, the town employees are. And you know, they're managing the site, so they're knowledgeable of things, uh, you know, that, that may be out there, that may be hazards and things like that. So we want to. We want to separate these, these two areas out because they could be considered different from risk management perspective. Uh, and number two, because as we did some of our delineations. Um, some of our borings actually crossed over this imaginary, current imaginary line onto the property. That, that would still be retained by the transfer station. We still came up with some of these deep contaminants that are present. Um. We haven't completely delineated how far that goes and. If DS requires further delineation, that would be managed separately and wouldn't hold up construction of the park. So if there is something that needs to be done. It could be done separately and not necessarily tied to the development of parks. So those are the two reasons to separate these out. Again, this material is generally exempt material. So my guess is because the transfer station is what it is. There will be no further need for action on that because there's, there's no high intensity, high frequency exposure of anybody at that property. And again.
You spoke about. Um, sampling. And that sampling was probably in, in this. Grant that you're applying for may only cover the first couple of years. I'm assuming two to five. Uh, but that there's a, the sampling would need to be. Uh, required to be done for thirty years. Do you have any idea of what the cost of the sampling would be per year? Um. So the town would, you know, have some sort of figure.
Yeah, so the estimate for that, and that's a great question, so. We're assuming it's gonna be once a year sampling because again, the contaminants that are present out here are not particularly uh. High in concentration exceeding the, the. What we call the ambient groundwater quality standards uh that DS uses. Um, and again, there's no risk. There's no exposure to the groundwater at this site. So we've assumed once a year sampling with, with minimal reporting. And that comes out to be between five thousand and seven thousand dollars a year. So. You can extend that out over the period of, of thirty years. Now thirty years is a number we typically use, but again, I wanna just. The, the sampling will have to occur as long as right now there are contaminants present. So it could, could go beyond thirty years, but. New Hampshire DS could change their regulations in the next thirty years. We don't really know. So thirty years is usually considered as basically a pretty good long-term monitoring approach. And that is a manageable amount that could be built in similar to what the town is already doing with. Landfill wastewater treatment plan and lagoons, things like that.
Okay, um. Do we have any idea how much money? This would be coming from the EPA grant, OJ? Is there a? I'm assuming that you don't have the grant already, right? That this is just for the. Public hearing for the application to, for the grant?
Correct. This is, this is the, what, what, this is the application we're submitting to the EPA to get a two million dollar grant.
To get a two million dollar grant.
Correct.
So the town would have to come up with, under this cost estimates, two point one. So, so if you got, you'd have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars if the EPA grant passed.
Yes, the, the, the difference with that would be a hundred thousand dollars. There may be other funding. Options so that the town may or may not have to come up with the other hundred, but at this point, we're, we're looking for the two million and. We'll be ready to, you know, move forward. With seeking other. Portions of that hundred thousand if, if, if needed. In, in um. Um, Dick is here. Do you want to answer that?
Yeah, I just chime in on that a little bit. Um. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services is uh certainly well aware of this program. Um, and they, they have heavy involvement with a, a variety of brownfield projects throughout the state. Um, and um. For the project in Franklin that Tim mentioned earlier, uh, DES contributed. Uh, will be contributing after an approval by the governor and council in a few weeks. Um. Uh, six, six hundred and three thousand dollars uh to that project, so um. Yeah, Tim, I think has already had some very preliminary discussions with the ES staff. Um, but discussions with them will be ongoing and will uh, hopefully bear fruit.
All right, the last question that I have, thank you for bearing with me here is that, so. Have, have you ever done any projects like this and have there ever been any? I guess I would call them um. Liability issues with users on property that has been cleaned up by a, uh. On a contaminated site. I mean, we're gonna be putting a lot of children. Parents, a lot of people on this site and. I guess, I, I guess I'd like to know what degree of confidence. You might have, you might express that you would have as the future liabilities for the town.
Yeah, it, no, that's a great question and uh, it's, it's certainly a good consideration and yes. Uh, Novus and I directly have worked on projects similar to this where we've worked under a risk. Uh, based approach to cleanup. Um. We're currently working on a housing project in Concord right now that's in another pre eighty-one landfill and, and they're doing a similar thing and they're gonna build. Uh, affordable housing over the top of it. So this is certainly a practice that is utilized. Um, the key component in this is, you know, we're, we're gonna work in concert with. The state and federal regulators to get these approvals so that we've got something defensible that says we've engineered this, the best management practices. And the standards that the state has applied and we have their blessing for this. That's the most important thing with this. Um, your concern is noted, but I, you know, I think that from my experience. We can demonstrate that we've mitigated all of the risk. Again, nobody's drinking the water or we're managing the groundwater appropriately. We've isolated any of the contaminated media and once we get the sign off from New Hampshire DS that we've, we've implemented a, a. Basically appropriate remediation. It would be very, you know, it would be difficult, I think, for somebody to come back on the town and say, you know. This is, you know, you're, you're created a liability here. I mean, never say never in the land of litigation these days. And as I say in a lot of meetings, I'm a geologist and not a lawyer. So if, if you have. Serious concerns of town and I'm sure it has consulted with their attorneys, but. We have done these projects. They have been successful and uh, you know, we're gonna have to continue doing projects like this. And developing anywhere where there's been industry before, quite frankly.
Thank you. That's all questions I have.
Well, we may have mandated. There's no mandate. I mean, I would say that if the town chose to not do anything, at the minimum. The state would probably require removal of the sludge again because that's not an exempt area. Uh, and just a routine management of groundwater again because we have exceedances. Uh, this area is, as we've discussed, it's exempt from the standard regulations, so. Doubtful that they're going to come in and mandate the larger portion of things. Um. There would be certain expectations though that. You know, this, this isn't high risk for the state, so it may, it may go a while. As I've seen, some of these could be five years before anybody revisits it, but. You could bet some, at some point, somebody would revisit this and a letter may come like, hey, what are you planning to do with the contamination that? That you're obligated to manage out there.
Would, would, would the state, would the state mandate? The um fence and the no use. Regulation?
Probably not because this is, this is, uh, again, it's an exempt area. What happens then though is the town is exposed to potential liability, right? Again, like.
Mm-hmm.
Like he's referencing because you've got potential exposure. As I said, there's trees falling over and you've got, you've got waste materials right underneath. Root ball right there. So, you know, that's the, that's the risk that you run with, with that scenario to do nothing, if you will.
Right. Okay, Paul?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It, um. Is there any upfront money that the town would have to do? Provide. Um, prior to being awarded the uh grant. For any engineering services or stuff like that? And, and if so, you have any idea what that might be?
Well, me, um, it just kind of is a, a quick summary. Um. The, if the town is successful in obtaining this grant from EPA, uh, kind of. First off, some very, some administrative issues will need to be addressed, some additional forms filled out. Responding, responses to certain questions uh coming from EPA and DES. Um. But what the town would then, kind of the first, I guess I would say, big step that the town would undertake is to. Um, uh, put out a, a request for qualifications to hire a qualified environmental professional. Uh, and Novus would probably certainly be can, um, submitting a proposal for that. There's. You know, six or seven or eight firms, you know, across uh New Hampshire in the region uh that would be submitting for, uh, uh, could, could be submitting proposals. Um, and then the town will need to go through an evaluation process, an interview process, et cetera. Um, and then once the uh QEP and the firm uh is um. Uh, is hired, uh, then they would start doing some of the. Uh, some of the early administrative steps to get us to a point where we would be hiring a contractor. The hiring of a contractor is also carried out through a standard sort of request for proposal, request for qualification. System, uh, again with interviews, selection, uh, et cetera. Um. But all of, all of, all of the QEP costs and the contractor costs uh would be covered by the two million dollars uh coming from EPA.
So I guess my question, probably better phrase is, if we did, if the town didn't qualify for the EPA grant.
Yeah.
Um, how much? Would the town be unhooked for, for that, up until that process? So if they submit all this and it doesn't get. Approved for some reason, uh, the EPA didn't approve the grant. Um, what's the cost to the town? Or is there any?
You, you want to, you end up wanting to construct the park anyway, but there's another grant. This grant comes around every year on an annual basis. So, you know, there would be the option to hold off and apply for the next round of grants. So if the town is not selected. Through this current grant period, you can request a debrief. And EPA will provide basically feedback on why you scored low. Now this is. You're gonna go through the whole grant process, Dick?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So it's very, it's very competitive, um, but there's the option basically to, to go after the next grant in the following year and certainly. If the town wants to continue this path, has the patience for it. Again, that's why developers don't like this. It's not fast enough, but. Municipality is, we can wait a while, right? Because we don't have the money anyway, so might as well wait and get it. Um, there's the option of waiting and, and getting this and trying to get other support from DS or other funding mechanisms as Dick had referenced.
And, and Paul, we have incurred some costs up until this point to get the consultants on board. We did get a, well. DES issued Novus a grant for the remedial, remedial action plan, but we have incurred some costs to get us to today. Correct.
Do you know what that cost is, Karen, today?
Um. Yeah, I, yeah, I think when we, yeah, when we originated it. Last year when we said we were gonna move forward in this process, I think it was between thirteen and fifteen. I don't know what the town has spent. In the last decade or so on this project, but I know for this part of the grant writing. Going towards going for the EPA grant was the thirteen to fifteen range.
Thirteen, fifteen thousand?
Yes. Yes, that was approved last fall, I believe, when we decided we were gonna move forward with this.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
But it doesn't merit the, the level of risk um as far as exposure because there's, you know. Superfund is typically applied where you have a very broad risk base. You have a population, sensitive populations that are really impacted. You've got either, either uh, non-responsive or just. Non-existent PRPs, responsible parties. Uh, where EPA may step in or there you have responsible parties who really aren't doing what they're supposed to and EPA steps in and make sure they do it. So. Um, this is, Brownfields program was in part. Uh, formulated to. Avoid getting people into the national priority list program because it's not a good place to be. It's a totally different world. Brownfields nice cooperative place to, to reside. You don't want to be in super. So. We will need an attorney for that.
And a lot of patience.
Any other questions? All right, um. Yeah, so Dick, do you want to?
Well, well, these guys have covered everything. We can go home now. Um, now, um, my name's Dick Lewis. Uh, for seventeen years, I worked as the city planner for Franklin, New Hampshire. Um, I retired in twenty twenty-one. In twenty twenty-two, I did write, as Tim mentioned. Uh, the grant application to EPA for funding for the cleanup of a, a mill site that sits right at the edge of the. Wind Pissaki River, uh, basically in the heart of the downtown. Um. Uh, that application was uh approved and the town received about one point nine six. Million dollars and then we had additional funding from DES and the. Uh, the Bureau of Economic Affairs uh through their Invest New Hampshire program. They have. One, one of the Invest New Hampshire programs um was for missful demolition. Um, and so the, the, uh, the, the BEA money and the DES money. Uh, were directed towards the demolition and the EPA money is for the remediation, uh, which is, um. Right now, the building is, building started to come down today. Uh, it'll take a little while and we'll start remediation. Sometime in hopefully two thousand sixteen, early seventeen. Um, the, the application process is very competitive. Um, there are, there are ten EPA regions around the country. Um, and for the grant that the town is looking at, uh, a two million dollar grant. EPA gives twenty-three of those grants out. Uh, so basically it's about two per EPA region. They do like to spread them around. Um. The um, uh, the next, the next level up is four million and they're only giving away ten of those. Um, there's a smaller level for up to five hundred thousand dollars, but that obviously is not gonna cover. Uh, the needs of the, the town of Lincoln. Um, the, the applications, uh, the deadline is November fourteenth. Um, we're in pretty good shape uh with the closure of this public meeting and then the. Preparation of some uh materials based on the meeting minutes and outline of questions and answers, et cetera. Um. We are working to try to be ready to submit the application on November seventh. Unfortunately, EPA does not give bonus points for submitting early. Um, but the sooner we get it in, the better off we will be. Um, the applications are reviewed by EPA SAF all over the country. We are in region one, the New England region for EPA. Uh, no one in region one will be looking at the town of Lincoln application. Um, they're distributed widely, so you, you never really know who's gonna be looking at, which is why they ask a lot of questions in the application. Uh, you know, discuss this, discuss this, oh, discuss it again, um, because you don't really know again. What, what staffer is gonna be looking at it? There's a lot of material. Um. But it's a, it's a good review process and uh. It's worked for EPA and as Tim said, uh, you know, the Franklin grant was, uh. Uh, the application was submitted in two thousand twenty-two, so it was FY twenty-three grand. Um, and they've been keeping up uh yearly funding for grants uh since then. I'm not sure how long the money will hold out, but uh, I think everyone in this line of work is keeping their fingers crossed. Um. It's a, it's an extensive grant. Uh, it basically consists of four primary parts. Um, there's uh four required federal forms that need to be filled out, signed. Uh, that covers budget contracts, sort of basic administration stuff. Um. There's a narrative sheet, the, the grant, you know, the um, the EPA guidelines for cleanup grants. Um, is about seventy pages and the frequently asked questions is about a hundred and fifty pages, I think. Um, there's a lot of nuance to this grant application, uh, as there typically is with federal grants. Um. But there's a whole bunch of criteria that you need to satisfy in order to be eligible to receive the grant. So that, so the eligibility threshold narrative is one of the important parts of the grant. Um. The um. Sort of the, the meat of the matter is the ten-page narrative. There are four. Um. Uh, criteria that you really need to discuss. Um, one is sort of a description of the site. Uh, related brownfield issues, some history of the site, levels of contamination, et cetera. Uh, there's a section on a reuse strategy. Um. And uh, community needs is one of the, the sort of the second section and that looks at. Um, community engagement, you know, how is the plan involved in the project up to this point? Um, what are the resources? Uh, are you able to leverage additional resources to help the project move along? Um, and then there's a significant discussion on health and welfare issues and impacts to um. Uh, sensitive populations. Um. Uh, there's a whole section on. uh, sensitive populations. Um, uh, there's a whole section on capacity, program capacity, city staff, who's going to be managing the project and previous experiences. Um, but the, uh, sort of all these four criteria, um, uh, it's a 10-page narrative. Um, and EPA is not kind. If you submit 10 and a half pages, there better be a period at the end of page 10 because they throw away page 11. Um, I, in the, they instituted that, I think about three or four years ago. They were getting bombarded with, you know, 15, 20, 25-page narratives, which just really did not work for the reviewing SAP. Um, but it's a, it's a, it's a good process. Um, the application I said is due November, uh, November 14th. It's a long review process. Um, uh, the Franklin, I don't think heard until, uh, end of May, um, on that. Um, and sometimes, I mean, if there are some, you know, if, if you don't, if you're not eligible for the grant or you, you know, really just kind of make a mistake and don't address some of the key criteria in the application, you know, you're going to get in the reject pile pretty quickly. But every once in a while, if there are some questions that EPA staff, uh, generate, uh, they may come back to the town and after some clarifications, but I think they try to sort of just work with material, typically work with material that they have. Um, and, um, one of the nice things that EPA does on a national level is they contract with universities, I think typically universities around the country. Um, and in the New England region is the University of Connecticut and they establish kind of a, a program team, uh, with professors, uh, graduate students, et cetera. And they provide assistance to cities and towns who are putting together these applications. Um, and I use them extensively in the Franklin application and have used them, uh, for the Lincoln application as well. I've submitted a couple of document packages to them. Um, and I got the last package last night at, uh, 11:30. Um, so I started worrying about this morning, but you know, they, 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 they really look at the nuances of the application, you know, each one of these 10 or the, the four criteria, you know, there'll be one criteria that's let's say two sentences long. And they'll break those two sentences up into two or three parts and sort of create kind of a rubric of what are they getting at, you know, and did you address it? Did you not? And what are you? Where, where might the shortcomings be on the application? So they provide a lot of really, really good assistance and they provide that, uh, at no cost. Um, the, um, as I said earlier, I think we're in pretty good shape. The drafting of the narrative is pretty much done. You know, following the meeting tonight, I'll put together, you know, summaries, sort of minute summaries, go kind of make a list of the Q and A, uh, get the sign-in sheet, um, and that all goes into one of the threshold criteria. Um, that's sort of at the end of the package. I mean, a copy of the legal ad as it appeared in the, um, uh, Lincoln or the Littleton Courier, et cetera. Um, so we're, we're getting pretty close, you know, once we get, once they get all this other stuff put together, um, you know, I'll go through it, Ray will go through it, you know, sort of get a couple, a couple sets of eyes on it. Um, to do final editing and tweaking. I don't think, I'm pretty much done with feedback from, uh, University of Connecticut. Um, so just kind of fine tune it, um, make sure we meet the 10-page criteria, which we are in good shape for right now. Um, and then, uh, get it submitted, sit down with, um, uh, Karina and her staff on hopefully November 7th, uh, work through the application forms that need to be submitted. Everything gets submitted electronically. The application forms, they all go through grants.gov, a very complex and brain-wracking, uh, program that the, uh, federal government has. Um, but get those, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll get those. Uh, I think we're, we're pretty much done. Once I complete the budget, uh, form, um, I'll be shipping those off to you. Um, well, I mean, I'll, I'll have Ray and, uh, Tim take a look at them, uh, in the next couple of days. Uh, but once we're, once we're done with those, we can ship those off to you and hopefully I think you can start entering stuff into grants.gov and save it so you can find it again and then edit it if you need to. Um, and then once, once we get the, uh, the full package, which is the 14 or 16 pages of all the narratives, the APCA, um, one attachment, you can only have one attachment, which is going to be the locus plan. Um, and, uh, you know, so that's going to turn out to be about 70 pages. You PDF that and you, uh, bring it up to the town hall in a thumb drive and you drop that into the application and hit send. Um, and then you are done. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jose?
Go ahead, Paul.
So if we, if the town of Lincoln does not get approved for the EPA grant, at what, what point will the state jump in and say, we want you to go to alternative one and put the $300,000 fence up and the rest of the stuff? Or do they keep, do they stay in the bands and as long as you're applying for grants?
Yeah. So I'll answer that. Um, my experience is that as long as, uh, there's an understanding that the town is still pursuing opportunities to address this, the state is relatively forgiving as long as they know that it's not being ignored and mothballed completely. Um, we would want to relay the, to them that our intent is to go after another cleanup grant in the following year. Um, and, uh, as Dick referenced, the state has monies too, and we've applied previously, Ray has applied previously for, for a state brownfields cleanup for just the sludge area, which we were, they didn't feel that we were quite ready for that. And I think, uh, the Franklin project got the, got, got that money anyway for, for a Stanley mill, but, um, sorry, the state has its own money that it's coupled together. So there may also be the opportunity to sort of patchwork again, uh, some of these, uh, needs and say, okay, we, we, we don't have the, the funding available to do it all, but we can get funding from the state, uh, to do just the sludge disposal area or something like that to knock off some stuff. So we should not close our eyes to those options as well. But, um, just to sort of reiterate my response, D E S, they're, they understand municipal funding, uh, limitations and the processes that, that the town is limited by. You've got to get a budget approved on an annual basis. They do too. They're a state entity. They go through the same thing. They, they have a very much forgiveness for that. As long as you are not negligently neglecting it and you are not exposing anybody. And in this case, we can demonstrate, you know, any exposure is really very limited as far as the stuff that is regulated out here, again, because of what's grandfathered for the waste material.
All right. Thank you.
Think that there's a lot of engineering questions that would have to be answered for that. So maybe you have an answer for that, Ray, but.
Um, I think, yeah, I think I, I could envision where you could, you could permit a lagoon for this area, but it would definitely be a lined lagoon. So, um, yeah, so I mean, what, no, you're not, you're, you're, the, the threshold you're looking at is 80%. So that's, that's the 80% um, capacity of the treatment plant. That's what triggers involvement or in notification to D E S that you're at 80%. You got to start thinking about an expansion of your wastewater treatment plant. Oh, I think you're in the mid 60s as I recall. We, we looked at that back in, I,
2020.
20, yeah, May of, I remember it was May timeframe. Yes. Yes, we included all of that. Forest Ridge. Right.
Coolidge Falls.
Coolidge Ford, Rapids.
All, all vested.
65, we'll call 65%. Truly not there yet.
Right. Right. Well, I think at the end of the day, you might be moving away. Uh, this is just, this, just my opinion, but I mean, I think you'll probably, you'll probably move, be moving towards a treatment process that would not be aerated lagoons. You could, it might be SBRs. It could be anyone. There's a lot of technology out there that has a very small footprint, uh, that could probably fit within the footprint of your current wastewater treatment plant. It's a different process. Um, it's just basically turning that over into the certain, a different type of treatment process because you're, I think you're still up for renewal on your Niptes permit. I think we submitted that renewal back in 2014.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think you've gotten anything yet. So, um, the region one of EPA is way behind on their Niptes permit, um, evaluations. And so, but when you do get a new Niptes permit, you are going to have tighter effluent limits. And when that happens, that actually may trigger an upgrade at your treatment plant. We're dealing with similar situation with a couple of our other clients where the Nipte, the new Niptes permit that they received is actually make their, their current facility can't handle the removal efficiencies that are necessary in order to meet those effluent limits. So my guess, given where you are in terms of your current loading and where you are probably in the permit process, because we are seeing some north country communities starting to get here from the EPA on new Niptes permit. So you're probably on the horizon, um, in terms of, in terms of the new Niptes permit, that may trigger something. But you'll have, the, the EPA and the D E S will give you time to address that. It's not something that they're going to come in and put on your desk and say you have to comply within the next year. Um, the schedules that we're seeing now are, uh, typically, you know, five years, um, before you actually have to comply with these new effluent limits, assuming you need a new treatment process in order to do, you know, to get to those removal efficiencies that are necessary to comply. You're welcome.
Go ahead, Kim.
Oh, no, that was referring to another funding source. Yes, yeah.
I know you said, oh, do you want to say something? I know you said you, this is subject to further editing and all of that. A couple of things that, that, and just in reading that, to, to point out, our northern borders grant was,
500,000.
Okay, 500,000, not 400.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, and, and then the, the other thing I noticed is, is in some of your tables, you've referred to the, the town will do this, the town will do that. And then the next one says the city will do this, the city will do that.
Oh, I, I apologize.
I, I know you.
Well, and one other thing.
Called cutting and paste.
And I know you.
I'm guilty.
Well, no, and I sent Ray an email also this morning with, uh, another, the town and city thing and also, um, and I, I didn't know if this was relevant or not, but there's also a lot of reference to the skate park and like, I know the, the NOBIS report and that, okay, good. And so that's no longer going to be part of it.
Pulled that out.
Perfect.
Should they replace that with pickleball court?
Maybe.
Seriously, that's, that's the, the discussion that we are certainly hearing. So this park is, is, is pickleball. And it's, and it's not in the master plan that, you know, we talked about, but, but we know once this starts going, that's going to be discussed. I know Kim shaking her head. There's, there's a lot of people who are shaking their head that that's, you know, that could. The skateboard.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, that's kind of what I thought. So it's a nice close to the public parking. Anyway, just.
You're at the park.
Keep that. Um.
Yep.
But tho- those are just the only.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I believe I would, I would be catching that on edit number seven.
I'm, I'm sure you would, but, um, just wanted to point out, other, other than that, I, I'm just real happy with the whole presentation here tonight and optimistic. And, and like you said, if, if we don't get it this year.
Try again.
It'll do, we'll do it next year.
You gotta, you have to keep on going for it. You have to keep up the energy. These brownfields projects, especially the big ones like this.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, it's a patchwork quilt and you've got to be patient, you know, and hopefully you continue to have, you know, your, your, your town staff is, is still involved and, and eager to work on this stuff. And you've got resources like, like Ray to help, help sort of translate what I do for you. And you have to be patient. It is a patchwork quilt. There's several of these projects that the project Dick and I are working on right now, we're utilizing essentially four different funding sources to make this $3 million project happen to tear down this old hacksaw mill along the Winnipeg River. So different locality, similar issue, right? Where, where, and it's, it's taken four different funding sources from the state, from Lake Region Planning Commission, from EPA. So.
The, the 23 grants that the EPA does nationally, is that the same? Is it 23 every year or does it go up and down depending on?
It's changed. Well, in, for Franklin, for, um, the 20, the note, uh, 2022 grant, which is FY23 funding cycle, um, the top grant was two, was $2 million, which is why the grant application, the last four digits were $830, um, and which EPA is still scratching their head over. Um, but the, um, yeah, the Franklin, at that point in time, uh, Franklin got the 1.96 million. Uh, it was one out of 10. Um, they now, they, they've, they've modified their, their funding, uh, categories. Um, but yeah, 23, um, it could change. It, it's going to, it's going to change in a few years depending upon the amount of available funding.
Yeah, I think fiscal year 23 was the first year of the, this is basically all supported by, not all. So EPA has had routine funding on an annual basis that comes in from, from the, the federal budget. But the bipartisan infrastructure law is injected like 1.5 trillion dollars into trillion or billion. I always forget which one, but it's a significant amount of, of additional funding into the Brownfields program because number one, Brownfields is a bipartisan supported law. It supports cleaning up the environment and the economy. So who, who's going to go against that, right? And it helps get these sites cleaned up and back on the tax roll. That's really the whole purpose of it. I think that year, uh, that was the first round of the, the funding and they set the $2 million limit. And there was basically one per region. EPA has 10 regions and Franklin got the one out of, out of 10. Uh, so we're hoping that that's, you know, going to be successful for Lincoln this time.
Well, I mean, I'll just, I mean, other than drying the, other than driving the King Gomings Highway a few times, um, I didn't, I did not know a whole lot about the town of Lincoln. Um, I was shocked to learn that it was so big. Um, and big in land area, but small in population. But, you know, the, I think it was pointed out when you gave sort of the, the chronology, you know, the town's been working on this project for,
37.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and the skateboard park even kind of preceded that by a year or so. Um, I mean, I think, I think this is a, I think it's a, I think it's a good project. And I think that sort of given the nature of the town and the sort of the whole tourism base, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, creating a public park that's going to be open and available to everyone at no cost, that goes down to the East Branch of the Penny, which is just, you know, is a gorgeous river. Um, you know, with the walking paths and all of the other, uh, facilities that get created there. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great, I think you've created a great project. Um, and I think it's got a good chance.
Good. I'm glad you're optimistic too. All right. Yeah, any? If not, thank you. Thank, thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
Great update.
Thank you, Greg.
Oh yeah. Did everybody sign the attendance sheet? And Jane, did you put the, um, Zoom people on that attendance sheet? If you will do that before your photocopy, he needs that.
Thank you very much. Make my life easier.
You a raceway fan? Are you a race fan?
I am.
I'll I'll give you my confession. I am not at all a race. Yep.
You know, track up here. No.
I I lived in Blackboro, Massachusetts for eighteen years.
In where?
Blackboro, Mass.
Oh, oh, oh.
And actually was chairman of the planning board when the period built our new stadium.
Prop build.
And uh I could hear the stadium. And I said a lot of love things every.
They sure do come.
Got two races there.
Little city that they could on one weekend. Still a big crowd. Yeah, we wouldn't. I wouldn't have some of the amenities that that we have as far as a fire station equipment and stuff that they haven't done for a while.
The good old days.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you.
We'll be in touch soon.
All right, moving along, the next thing is another public hearing. This one is for the uh the the purchase and sales agreement we got for the two parcels in the business park. I can't find my copies of the actual purchase and sales.
Do you want me to grab mine or?
I can't remember the guy's name.
David Fromm. It's lot seven and lot eight. Sixty-eight thousand dollars was the offer on for each, correct?
Jane, thank you. I thought I had those written like off of my briefcase and I don't. Sixty-eight thousand dollars. The this was brought up to the planning. That's where it is. My planning board.
Oh, yes, probably.
All right, that's why I can't find. Um this is brought up to the planning board at their last meeting. There was discussion and and uh consensual agreement that that this is a good offer and to move forward. It was brought up that um and just want to mention this because it's a public hearing, that the original discussion back in two thousand and six, five, six was was that these lots to be used um by by whatever contractors, business owners to buy them to to build whatever they need for for business, you know, commercial building and would operate their business out of them. Um which is what the the first two lots um have done. This um lot, this buyer is looking to purchase the two lots but build a duplex, a commercial duplex on each one that would include some warehouse space and some office space in each side of the duplex. And although he would take one of the would be total of four units for himself, the other three would be leased out. So he would be a landlord. You know, again, although this wasn't talked about, it really opens up the usage of the business park to other businesses who may not want to or may not be able to invest in the real estate and building a building, but would open up as a as a tenant in these two buildings and the planning board saw no problem with that, which I don't see a problem. I think it fits the criteria, but it wasn't originally talked about it. And that's why I'm just sort of bringing this up at each meeting. So with that, I will open up the um hearing to the public for input on the sale of these two lots to Mr. Fromm for sixty-eight thousand dollars each. So anybody who and
Motion to close the public.
All right, motion to close public hearing. I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. And there will by state law have be a second hearing two weeks from tonight?
Correct.
Okay.
November. November fourth, yes.
Okay. Now I won't sign it. I didn't. Do you want, Jane, do you want this in the BOS folder or do you want these back? The PNSs?
Yeah.
All right. And I won't take it home. How's that?
Okay.
All right, let's move on to the town manager's report.
Okey dokey. Kept a pretty short and sweet for you this evening. Um South Peak Water Tank. Um I've spoken with Mark and he would like to schedule a meeting with the selectmen to discuss some of his questions and concerns regarding the water tank project. Um he's not available to attend a selectman's meeting on a Monday evening, so he was wondering if there were certain dates or times that the selectman would be available to meet outside of the traditional Monday night meeting.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
I know you're on vacation next week, right?
Yeah, after the election. Thursday, the seventh or Friday, the eighth.
Okay.
Of either of those days? Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Get back to.
When I when I give you those days and then um following week, Tuesday or Wednesday, twelve to thirteen. There's four dates you can send to Jack. You can chime in and then we'll get back to Mark.
Our Tuesday, the twelfth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the thirteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Perfect. Jack, if you want, I'll send you an email with those dates in them so you know exactly. Yeah, perfect. Okay. Uh Luann Lane easement. So I've spoken with Dave Rogers and he is unwilling to relocate the easement on his property as it encroaches onto the garage. Uh so um I did previously speak to the previous uh uh or not the previous, the abutting landowner on the other side. And he seemed a little bit more agreeable to potentially moving the easement. Um so I will reach back out to him. Right now, the way the path follows, um most of it is on the the Dave Rogers side of the property. It seems as if people use that driveway and go straight through and along the tree line, but on Dave Rogers's side.
Between between his garage.
Correct.
And the trees.
Correct.
Okay.
Um so but he is um looking to sell that property at some point and he said that he would be open to you us cutting down the trees rather than um relocating. So um so I will reach back out to the other landowner on the other side and see if he is more agreeable to potentially moving it so we don't have to cut those trees down. But I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Okay. Um, and again, yeah, the landowners and that's who would, I I just thought they might be more upset about us cutting.
Cutting down trees than.
Trees than, I know. Walking near the garage. But if that's that's if let's keep going.
Okay.
The other guy will allow it.
We can go that way.
Can work work around it.
Okay. No. Well, and at this rate, most likely nothing will happen if we're going to you know, brush hog it or do it. You know, we're not going to be doing anything that until the spring, most likely anyway. So we have a little time. Um MS one, so we finalized our MS one, which is the total town valuation last week. Um the town's total valuation increased by approximately um forty-three point seven million dollars totaling one billion, three hundred and eighteen million, nine fifty-seven, seven twenty-four. Um our utility value was reduced um approximately by three million. So we would have essentially um had an increase of forty-six million, but with the reduction in utility value mostly attributed to NHGC, the net was um the the forty-three million and change. So that has been finalized and shipped off to DRA. I spoke with our um DRA rep today, Jamie Dow, and I'm hoping to start going over all the required paperwork for us to get a tax rate. Hopefully some point this week, if not early next.
Okay. If you get it this week, notify us.
I definitely will. Yes, because I know you're on vacation next week. So um so I'll let you know how that goes. I did ask her to try to nail down a date and time and she said she couldn't nail down a date and time with me. So but she did say she'd stuck to the review process on her end. So we'll see how fast it goes. Uh lead and copper inventory. So uh to ensure our compliance with the EPA lead and copper inventory program, the town will be sending out notices in the next few weeks. So you um um many residents in town will receive one. Um we'll be sending notices to the locations where we do not have a record of the piping materials for the water service line. There are approximately fifteen hundred locations throughout the town with unknown service lines. Um a list of these locations can be found on the town's website. That was one of the requirements. We put that up uh last week, I believe. Um and uh to date, we want to just preface the conversation with to date, uh the water department has not found any lead pipes. So we don't have a tremendous concern that our piping is lead. Um so we just want to make that clear in our noticing so people don't, you know, cause an alarm for people, but we will be required by the EPA to identify the piping material. Um so this is essentially our first step in letting the property owners know that we don't have it identified and that we'll be working to identify it in the in the near future. So.
That doesn't prohibit town shut off into the home. That doesn't take into account that by.
It does. It's 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 the mains and also the service lines to the homes. Correct. Yes.
Yeah, that's that's the tricky part because if it was just the town lines, I think we pretty much know what we have.
Right, yes.
It's it's what from the curb stop to your house.
Could be anything. Nate is developing a plan with Sam Kenny for us to try to I guess, not reduce, but for us to kind of expedite a way of identifying the surface connections. Um we do have some local contractors that we're hoping to work with that will help us try to identify and the EPA is also not going to require that we identify one hundred percent of them. If we go down one of these streets and we could say there are twenty-three homes on the streets and we tested twelve or fourteen locations, they will consider that as a, you know, a pass essentially. So um but just so everybody knows, the notices will be going out, so we might be getting some phone calls, questions about it. Uh the due date for that is November fifteenth, so.
Wait, the due date for what is November fifteen?
The noticing.
That we have to notify the.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
This doesn't have to be done by.
No, we just have to notify the residents by November fifteenth. It had to be available to the public by last week, so we put it on the website. We also have a copy here at Town Hall. People want to come look at it. Um and then the the letters have to go out by the fifteenth.
Okay.
Back, you know, forties, fifties, thirties. Back.
Right. And Nate says, I I can't remember the material. He said most of our lines were made out of, but he said, do you remember what he was saying? Most of our lines? The the older lines were made out of um. I can't remember, but he said, he says it's going to be very unlikely that we find lead lines. So um Route Three waterline improvements, water main improvements. So Deep Lee's course has uh they they began work last week on Route Three. Uh the plan is to continue until DOT shuts them down around November fifteenth and that is weather dependent, but you will see the uh construction guys out there. Like I said, they started um putting the pipe together last week and they're going to do dig in this week. So and then Linwood Skate Park. Construction is complete at the Linwood Skate Park. So uh I know that last week, Jack, you attended the uh the walkthrough when they handed it off to the town. Um thank you for doing that. We were unavailable. Um and they are having a grand opening celebration. Um and that is scheduled for Saturday, November second at eleven o'clock.
And I did tell you, kids were using it over the weekend. I went down there Sunday at the church, about twenty kids.
No kidding, really?
Couple scooters and a bike. And I was surprised. So I called Kevin Bell today. I said, I didn't realize that. He said, oh, yeah, the kids are on scooters and the bikes they allow, but they make them take the pigs off. So when they go on the rails, the pigs don't hit the concrete and go on the rail. So it made sense.
And I drove by today. I went out at like two-ish. I took a ride, check out a couple areas and there were about, you know, six, half a dozen kids on it today. So in the middle of the day. So very cool.
I hope we get some pictures with some skateboarders on it.
I'm sure we will. Yeah.
The Charlie Port. Yeah. Yeah, it we might need those quickly because the weather's churning at the end of the week.
We are leaving the porta potty on site.
We are leaving the porta potty on site. Uh obviously not through the winter, but we will get it removed. Um you know, once the snow flies and then Kara says that she's going to make it part of her budget every year to budget from like April to November to have a porta potty there. It's relatively in expect expense inexpensive, costs us, you know, maybe
Because it's coming.
Couple grand a year. Yeah, yeah, let's not. Well, there will be no snow removal on it throughout the winter, so hopefully we won't have any visitors. But um yeah, we feel like it's a it's a relatively um uh cheap expense to just ensure that that place stays sanitary and cleansly, you know, so.
And Kevin did say, I asked about the winter. He said, somebody wants to go over and shovel it out.
Sure. But we won't be doing that. We don't want to sign Nate up for that. Um and that's truly um all I had for uh town manager's report.
All right, um. Did you have anything?
For the minutes?
Yep, I would admit for
Oh, no.
For me? Bring up, yeah. The only thing I had is we have a oh, yes. Letter of an irrevocable irrevocable letter of credit agreement that is between the town of Lincoln, um South Peak LLC, and then a company called Janco Inc. out of Rhode Island, who is the lender who is um supplying a a law, a commercial loan, I should say, a commercial line of credit. And this is an agreement between the three of us for the uh in lieu of a bond doing a letter of credit. Uh Jason has looked at this because I know the one question I had, he added.
Correct.
And
And this is for the
Oh, yeah.
Upper Crooked Mountain um subdivision, also known as Alpine Drive now. Not Fireside. No, there was no bond required during for Fireside, but there was a bond or letter of credit required for Alpine Drive. This is one of the last um criteria they need to kind of check off their site plan and subdivision approval. Um the bond is for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or the letter of credit, excuse me, is for four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And um our attorneys have reviewed it, as as OJ had said, Jason has reviewed it, had some very minor revisions um that South Peak accepted. And um here we are.
Yeah, and and it's the the breakdown of the four thirty-five is in here, but basically it's enough money that if they abandon the project, we can it it can get restored so it's not you know, drainage isn't a problem, runoff isn't a problem, whatever, just to restore it, not to build.
I guess, I mean, it doesn't it doesn't hurt it. Um it was a condition of the planning board's approval, so it was required. Um but I don't think it hurts to have a motion to accept it.
I'll make that a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Today is the twenty-first. Today is the 21st.
You don't need to sign that. That's just an example of if we were to draw from it, that would be what
Drawing certificate. Okay, all right.
Yep.
Thank you. Hope to read that. All right. You get to sign this too. All right, um, public participation. Is there any public participation?
Agreed.
Yes, agreed. Thank you. I, I wasn't sure if they were going to do that. I came in last week actually to find out if they were going to do that by Zoom and I was hesitant of that approach. I thought this was perfect, you know, coming here and all three of them and
Yeah, it was very thorough. I think, I think it gives a, a very clear understanding of what we have ahead of us and what our options are. Um, and kind of where we stand today. So I agree.
Thank you. All right, then let's go back to the minutes. And we got two sets here. Um, October 7th, there was a joint meeting between Lincoln and Woodstock Board of Selectmen.
Make a motion to move them as distributed.
I'll second that. All those in favor? All right. And then there's the same date, October 7th of just the, uh, link town of Lincoln Board of Selectmen. I'll second that. All those in favor? Right, sign these in. All right. Did you have anything on non-public?
I don't know.
Um, you gave me an update. Um, one-on-one about a personnel issue.
Oh.
I want to include him on that.
Sure.
Um, so I'll make a motion that we go into non-public for the discussion of a, uh, in town, uh, personnel issue.
Second that.
All those in favor? Aye. Sean, Wayne, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good night.
Go let your dog out.